Good evening, good folks, and welcome to this special work session for the City of Muskegon, City Commission on this Wednesday, March 29th. We are here for a presentation on our Housing Needs Assessment, conducted by Bowen National Research, and this is going to be led out by our Development Services Director, Jake Eckholm. Welcome.
Oh, should we do roll call first?
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Here.
Vice Mayor German, absent. Commissioner Gorman.
Here.
Commissioner Emery.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Claire. Jake Eckholm.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commission. I appreciate everybody taking the time to take the special work session on a Wednesday, and then also everybody watching at home, so. Mayor and Commission, I appreciate everybody taking the time to take the special work session on a Wednesday. He sounds awesome. But at any rate, we'll continue. Yeah, so we last year requested that the Commission endorse a request for proposals for a housing needs assessment for the next five years. We had had a narrower scope housing needs assessment done in 2016, and it was getting pretty dated based on our own infill housing, as well as some of the other projects that we knew were going on. So we really wanted to get a more accurate picture of what housing looked like on the ground, because due to COVID and other factors, we are starting to see a lot of upward pressure on rents, starting to have a lot more community-oriented conversations around gentrification and displacement of residents with limited means. So we wanted to take a data-driven approach, so we solicited proposals from a national research firm. So this presentation is our major findings report. You all, at this point, have both electronic and bound copies of the 400-page document. This really scratches the surface. I can tell you that I could have put 10 of these presentations together and probably said different data points every single presentation. So with that, we'll hop right into it. So this is our agenda. We'd like to walk through briefly our process, what the primary goals were, you know, as to what we're trying to achieve in conducting our five-year housing needs assessment, the meat and potatoes of this document, the key findings, and then what we would propose for next steps from a policy and an implementation standpoint of action items. And then hopefully you'll have a bunch of good questions. So, as I mentioned, you know, we released our RFP. We had you guys look it over first, make sure we were going to be capturing what we were, what we were trying to accomplish. And Bowen National Research, they won the bid, began the process last fall. They've also done Kent Counties, City of Grand Rapids, Ottawa Counties, and are currently under contract for a Muskegon County-wide housing needs assessment, which we are also participants in. So they have pretty extensive research experience in our, in our greater region. This process consisted of many components, including a stakeholder survey of housing agencies, governments, and other nonprofits. We had 39 agency respondents, which was quite strong. We had 64 major employers respond to the survey from the metro area that employed Muskegon City residents. And then our city-county resident and commuter survey, we had 1,695 total respondents, so strong numbers. It included a very in-depth onsite, over-the-phone, and online rental and for-sale housing stock analysis, demographic data analysis that we can't achieve in-house on our own, because this research firm pays for a lot of proprietary data put together by ESRI and other private firms that we just don't pay for. And even if we did, I wouldn't have the skillset to allocate it the way they do. So, and then obviously, the biggest thing that we're looking at is housing gap projections. What is our, what is our market going to need that we're not suiting over the next five years? And then we wanted to break that down by geography, and then we wanted to break down needs by median income level and housing types, and then obviously come up with some ideas as to how we could achieve better housing outcomes to suit the needs that the community has been giving us feedback on for the last couple of years. So. We divided the city, which you'll note referred to in the document as our PSA, or Primary Study Area, into seven sub-markets. We took our 15 neighborhoods and combined them where we felt it made sense from a demographic and income-oriented standpoint, and also a housing stock type standpoint. The only two neighborhoods that stand alone are Beechwood-Bluffton and Nelson, and there are specific reasons for that, which I'll get into in a little more detail. We had multiple working progress meetings over the course of the last six months to assist with data collection, distribution of links to the surveys, thanks to Community Engagement Manager Deborah Santiago-Sweet, and Strategic Initiatives Director Peter Wills. They really helped get the word out on those, on those live links for those surveys. The draft was delivered in late February. Internal review meant me reading it a couple times to make heads and tails of what I was reading, and then meeting with our senior staff, and then also, you know, presenting this to you, which is the phase we're at now. We did also have a meeting with Bowen and their leadership to make sure that the key findings we were really pulling and drawing from this document were consistent with what they felt that data reflected, and it was. So, and as I mentioned, there's another study that will be coming out in a couple of months that we're also financial participants in, and that study is a county-wide study led by the foundation that's really more steered towards exploring the need for like a county-wide housing resource, similar to what Housing Next is in Ottawa County, or Housing Kent is in Kent County. So our primary goals, you know, the housing market in the Muskegon area is rapidly changing. West Michigan is one of the tightest housing markets in the country, and that has finally spilled over into more tertiary markets outside of Grand Rapids Metro and Ottawa County. We wanted to critique, analyze, and perhaps amend our existing infill housing efforts, so we've built more houses than anybody in Muskegon County in the last couple of years. We've infilled more Lytech units than anybody in the last couple of years, so we wanted to see, you know, are we doing the right things? Are these things working? Are we only being reactive? Or are these strategies proactive and really suiting the needs as they exist? We wanted to gather data that would allow for more equity-based housing policies by neighborhood, i.e., you know, the east side of the city and the west end of the city are very different demographically, from an income standpoint, and we want to make sure that we're being respectful and honoring that in housing policy development. So this document gives us all the data we need to do that. And finally, compile a document that will encourage further private sector housing investment in a broader area, so not, basically not just Western Avenue, is what we're getting at there. We want to understand our housing ecosystem. So the study relates demographic and income data back to the housing conditions on the ground, and then what we think the future needs are going to be by geography. So, you know, like I said, Angel, McLaughlin, and Marshfield are going to need something different than Lakeside and Glen Side, and it really does a good job of sort of aggregating all the data by specific geography and shows that there's obviously different outcomes that are needed. And then we're going to look at that from a price point standpoint, and it really illustrates, you know, I think what we all know who live and work here, that there's drastic differences in the housing situation based on what part of the city that you're in. It illustrates that we've been building in the right price points and in the right geographic areas, so we've, we've done some things correctly. Despite our pretty aggressive infill pace over years, our gap has grown since that last study was done, and it's grown substantially beyond what we would have expected. We have housing gaps, and this is an important point I'd like you to highlight. We have gaps that will only be served by public sector intervention that we have not addressed. And so specifically, extremely low rent point needs based on the income data and the consumer feedback data, and then a cohort of buyers that could buy instead of rent, but they need price points that are under $120,000 in new construction, and that's very difficult to attain. No private sector entity is going to attain that, so. So, the goal again is to gather data that will lend equity-based housing policy. We're showing in stark terms what we already knew, and that it's, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, the housing reality that people are living in in our community is very different. The data reflects a lot of different challenges in our specific community related to successful housing outcomes. A lot of these are demographic data points, higher cohorts of poverty, things like that, that I'll get into with some specificity. And then certainly, it's going to make staff a lot better informed when engaging specific sub-markets regarding their housing needs and desires. So, I think what I'm speaking to here, and we've seen this in public comment, we've seen this in community engagement sessions, I think it just happened during the master plan office hours, somebody who lives in the NIMs neighborhood said, "Well, you need to be building cheaper houses," and houses that are at cheaper price points. And we kind of tried to illustrate, while we are building new construction at the cheapest price you can find in West Michigan, well, no, they should be cheaper than that. And so this actually gives data by numbers of units, like, okay, so when you say cheap, what does that mean, and how many of those units could we absorb over the next five years? We want to encourage further private sector housing investment. So this study, the biggest takeaway for me is that it reflects housing needs at all price points. So when we have people that give that feedback and that critique that say, you know, we would like, you need to build less expensive homes, or you need to build more waterfront homes, or you need to build homes for executives, I've heard that feedback as well, this study kind of says, yes, and, like it says, we really need housing at every price point, and hundreds of units each in, over the next five years. So that was the biggest takeaway. That was somewhat surprising to us, just the volume of units needed. Rents and sale prices for the market rate construction, they continue to pose a challenge despite record increases in our sale prices and record inflation in our rents in West Michigan, in Muskegon specifically. Opportunities to provide product for existing residents, as well as newcomers and commuters. There's a whole pretty robust section on commuter infill as an opportunity that we'll go into in some detail. So here are all the things that we're going to cover. Again, this is a drop in the bucket. I'm going to try to be as expedient as I can, and Mayor, I want to get some feedback from you. Would you like me to stop slide by slide for questions, because it's a rather in-depth presentation, rather than try to have people remember them till the end? It's, I think that might be a more efficient way to do things.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay. So with that, we'll jump right into it. So I mentioned that we split the city up into seven sub-markets. You'll note Beechwood-Bluffton stands alone. The reason for that is because we already knew from census data that the median income in Beechwood-Bluffton is far higher than every other neighborhood, and we didn't want them to cloud over any income shortcomings in the adjacent neighborhoods in Glen Side and Lakeside, which are also perceived to be higher-income neighborhoods, but not to the extent of Beechwood-Bluffton. So we left them by themselves. From a housing stock age and income standpoint, Glen Side and Lakeside are combined. Campbell Field and NIMs are combined for similar reasons. Nelson is by itself, because we wanted to really show what the demographics look like in Nelson, because most of the downtown development has taken place in what is the Nelson neighborhood. We wanted to see what impacts that had on the neighborhood itself. Jackson Hill and Marquette, again, similar urban renewal era replating of house lots and construction of newer, newer homes. McLaughlin, Angel, and Marshfield are all very demographically similar. And then Steel, Sheldon Park, Oakview, and East Muskegon. East Muskegon has almost no housing. It's almost purely industrial, but we did want to include it, because there is a small neighborhood in there as well. Again, those are all newer pieces of housing stock, kind of that were the earliest vestiges of the housing stock built from Muskegon Township as well. So we're going to jump right into it. Some of these slides are dense. I'm going to run through them as quickly as I can. So overall projections on population in our household data. Our population is set to stop declining over the next five years, which is great. So this last 2020 census showed a population decline within the margin of error for our community. It was less than 400 people, and that's, that's pretty substantial. So this population projection actually shows it either stabilizing or increasing slightly, but well within a margin of error. But household growth is projected to grow at 109 new households over the next five years. So that means that we will create new need for housing units purely by the way that our community is stratified. So while we won't see more people, we will see more households. City household growth in that time period is going to more than triple the balance of Muskegon County. So when you read through that document, you'll see PSA, which is Primary Study Area, or the city, and you'll see SSA, which we contracted to have as our secondary study area, which is basically everything in Muskegon County except for us. So we wanted to be able to compare ourselves to all the other housing markets in, in the county. And then you'll see the state of Michigan also. So our, our household growth is going to more than triple the balance of Muskegon County, and likely more than double the state of Michigan's household growth. One, and so in this section, I highlighted some demographic data points that really impact housing and housing needs for people. One of them is the city has far fewer married individuals than the balance of the county, so only 29.2% of city residents identify as married, and it's over 52% for the balance of the county. So obviously, that has housing impacts as to the number of incomes in a household and the size of household that's needed oftentimes. The city has a large and growing base of senior households. Significant growth in older millennials and middle-aged households is projected as well. Effectively, once you look through the study, and I'll repeatedly highlight, like, read the study, because every single data point that I'm putting in here is greatly expanded on in the document, but basically, it suggests that we're having an aging population. We have a younger-than-average population for the county right now, and it's projected to age pretty substantially over, just by cohort of households. Nearly all household growth trends are predicted in the Nelson sub-market, and then the sub-market comprising Steel, Sheldon Park, Oakview, and East Muskegon. That second part, we found rather surprising, and so we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. Nelson, I think one would expect, as new units are constructed along the lake shore and places like that. But Sheldon Park, Oakview, and East Muskegon, that suggests that there are probably multi-generational households in those areas, and if you look at the age demographic data, some of the youngest people in the city live in that, those neighborhoods, and so I think the conjecture is that they would eventually break off and, and create their own households over the next five years. So, community and, uh, community demographic information. So this is data that we've kind of put together from multiple sources that really puts everything in one spot for us, which is very handy. Age, race, marital status, education, and earnings. So we mentioned married individuals, but the median age is 35.7 years. That's quite a bit younger than the balance of the county at almost 42 years old, and the state of Michigan at 41 years old. So we're also far more diverse. Only 53% of citizens in the city identify as Caucasian alone. That's compared with 82.5% of the rest of Muskegon County, so there's a stark difference there, and 76.1% of the state of Michigan. Again, I mentioned a far fewer proportion of married households. City has far higher population without high school diplomas, so citywide, and this is something that is greatly stratified by geography. So 12.6% of our city residents do not have a high school diploma, and that number does not account school-age children. That's numbers of people that should, that don't. And so.
What is it, the number?
It's 12.6% citywide. To put that in perspective, in Beechwood-Bluffton, it's 1.4%, and then in some of our urban core neighborhoods, it's as high as well over 1 in 5 people. So, it, well, 1 in 5 people total. The balance of the county is 5.9%, state of Michigan 7.7. So, and then this is also a very stark number that we need to take a hard look at as it relates to housing. In the city limits, 24.8% or almost 8,000 citizens of 39,000 citizens, including 1/3 of all children, have far higher, that's the poverty rate, so that's far higher than the balance of Muskegon County at 11.5%. So effectively, just over 1 in 4 people in the city limits are at or below the poverty line, and 1/3 of all kids. I've left this table in here for you to take a quick look at. This is a key findings summary for each sub-market, and so you'll notice there's a lot of things that trend as you would expect, and then there's a few surprises in there. So, you know, as we discussed, Beechwood-Bluffton has the highest median household income. It has the most affluent renter base. It has the most affluent owner base. Has the highest share of vacation rentals, which we'll get into that briefly as well. Has the highest growth in vacation rental units over the last several years. Has the least homes for sale, things like that. But then if you get into like our urban core neighborhoods, you can kind of see, there's a lot of young folks. There's a lot of people that are probably in multi-generational households. There is absolute lack of apartment base, 100%, 100% occupancy in most cases. You know, high shares of renters earning less than $30,000 annually. So you'll notice like pretty stark differences. And as I mentioned, the McLaughlin, Angel, and Marshfield sub-market has the highest proportion of residents with no high school diploma, 18%, and then has the highest poverty rate. This is a number that surprised us. It's 38.7% in those three neighborhoods, so effectively, 4 of 10 people living at or below the poverty line. So look those over at your leisure. Those are all, that is a table that exists in the document. This is another important thing that we need to recognize from a housing standpoint. So a lot of this data is specifically, we want to highlight it because it relates tangentially to housing needs. Over there, from 2016 to 2020, 76.2% of residents stayed in their same housing unit over that five-year period. That's far more transient or a lot more moving around going on than the balance of the county, which was almost 88%, and the state of Michigan, which was almost 87%. So we have a much higher-than-average proportion of renters in the community, which causes a lot more natural transients, and then we have a lot more income-constrained folks in our housing, both from a owner-occupied and a rental side, and that also causes more transience. So the city's median income has increased 30% over a 12-year period. It's still far lower than, far, far lower than the balance of the county and much lower than the state. So even though we've had a 30% income recovery since what you would call sort of the peak of the recession, we're still sitting at just under $36,000 as our area median income for our city limits. It's just under $61,000 for the balance of the county. So substantially larger cohort of people with limited income. Median income varies wildly by sub-market, and that's the map that I included on this slide. It kind of shows you the reason for some of that transience, and it relates to income. So highest median income is Beechwood-Bluffton at $73,917, and the lowest is that Angel, McLaughlin, and Marshfield sub-market area at $30,308. And then each, this is actually breaks it down with a little bit more specificity. It actually breaks it down by census block group as well. So there's multiple numbers in each sub-market, and we average those to get the sub-market average. So before I get into this slide, are there any questions so far? This one's a pretty intense slide.
Commissioners, any questions thus far? Commissioner Ramsey.
Jacob, could you just expand on multi-generational households and what that means within our community?
Sure. Yep. So multi-generational households means that you have more than one adult generation living in the same housing unit. So it can be adult children living with parents. It can be grandparents living with their grandkids. It could be parents, you know, elderly parents living with their working-age kids. It effectively means that there's more than one adult potential householder living in the same housing unit, and that always correlates higher with rental stock, and it always correlates higher with low-income communities and communities of color. And so you'll notice it trends very substantially with the income data and the ethnic demographic data by neighborhood. So it's more common in those places.
Yeah, I think it's important for everyone on the bench to realize that while that is an indicator of poverty and an indicator of lack of housing, that it's also a cultural norm for a lot of, like mine. It's something that, that, that we've done all throughout history. Here in the United States, pre, pre-boomer generation, it was something that we did here, and then boomers and housing and all these great things happened as we continued to develop everything across this country from one shore to the other, and then it stopped happening, and now it's happening again, and not only in high-density locations like the seaborbs, but across the country, because there's a lack of housing stock in general, and everything costs so damn much.
Yep, I think that's a good point. So this study does not presume that those multi-generational households are needs-driven. The only point where we point those out from a needs-driven standpoint is in overcrowded housing, which is a federal category of substandard housing, and we'll get into that a little bit too.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Vice Mayor German.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Director Eckholm, you touched on the poverty rates of 38.7% in the Angel McLaughlin area, and due to the need and increase of housing, and I still have yet to read through the study here, have there been any suggestions or solutions how we could bring that median income up? I have city targeted on bringing jobs here for residents to, you know, help bridge that gap and get good-paying jobs. Where are we at on that? And I know that's kind of outside of what we're doing, but you know.
A worthy digression. But, uh, so what I would say absolutely is, we need to, and in our master plan document, we were putting together like an economic development strategy, comprehensive economic development strategy. So the simple answer usually when you look at those kinds of numbers is, well, we need more jobs. But in reality, the number of jobs that we have available in our metro market is higher than the number of people that we can fill with them with. As an example, before COVID, we were having serious conversations, how do we import labor? Because, you know, we were having all these contracts come through for industrial and healthcare, and we couldn't find people to take the jobs. And so when it comes to neighborhoods or cohorts of our, our community that have like multiple generations of generational poverty, and, and that's because of all kinds of institutional barriers that have been set up over the course of decades, it's not as, yeah, simple to only have the jobs available. You also have to get access, equitable access, you know, soft skills, training, networking, training, things like that. So there's all kinds of things that need to happen to provide those people with the necessary resources to attain that employment, which would raise them out of that poverty rating. But it's not a, there's no simple solution. And I think as it relates to housing, in the interim, those people still need to be safely and housed with dignity. And so, and that's one of the challenges we're running into is in a lot of those neighborhoods that's, in some cases, not the case. And so you'll, you'll see higher-than-average cohorts of substandard rental properties, higher-than-average cohorts of overcrowding, things like that, and those neighborhoods that are mostly impacted by poverty. And so you mentioned McLaughlin-Angel. It also includes Marshfield. Yep. So that one is quite stark. There are census blocks in the Jackson Hill-Marquette area that are quite stark, and then obviously, the east side of Muskegon also has, you know, Steel and Oakview and places like that. It varies by census block, but those are real needs in those communities. I think we're going to have to basically come at this from a wraparound approach, where we say, here's economically what we need to do from a policy standpoint, and then from a housing safety and housing accountability standpoint, here's what we need to be doing as well. And we're in this presentation, I will, I'll as well. And we're, in this presentation, I will, I'll get to like the timeline by which we want to make some policy recommendations to the commission. This is far too in-depth of a document for us to have, you know, firm policy suggestions at this point. And obviously, we want to meet with all of you one-on-one and, and let you take your time going through it. But this is one of the most important documents we're gonna have in our repertoire moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Could you, um, back up a couple of slides?
You're looking for that, uh, percent of households?
Right here.
Yeah.
Um, I'm curious in terms of the household growth trends by submarket. Um, earlier this year, when you first saw, saw the study and, uh, you shared one of the key, um, findings of it with us, which is the expectation that we'd be seeing, we're needing three thousand additional housing units in the next five years. How does that jive with this household gre- growth trends? Are you gonna get into that at some point? Cause it doesn't, I'm not seeing five thousand households when the most of that growth, or three thousand households, I'm sorry, most that grows in Nelson, and we're seeing zero growth and negative growth and the other SSAs. So I'm just-
The, it's a great question.
A little perplexed by-
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I think it's, uh, it's important for you guys to understand it as you read the document. It's good for the public at home. So these tables project the current five-year projection based on the last five years plus of housing growth and, and demand. So while we show in the study that we have demand for three thousand units, it doesn't necessarily project our growth trends as us achieving those three thousand units, because we're gonna have to take to the point I was just making actionable policy and development steps to improve these numbers. So these numbers are if nothing happened, if nothing changed, this is what it will look like.
So this is just a reflection of the past five years repeating itself?
Uh, yeah, there's some nuance to it. But yeah, like they, they take a look at, okay, the city built a hundred and thirty-two houses since twenty nineteen. So what if they did that, that rate, you know, sixty-ish houses a year? This is where we would be.
Okay. Now I can see why the-
Yeah.
The growth is pr- most pronounced in Nelson, and also why we're seeing flat-line growth in, uh, Campbell Field and, and, and NIMs despite us knowing that there are gonna be hundreds of new units coming online in the NIMs neighborhood within the next, you know, five years.
Indeed. And also recall that these are specific household growth trends, and so those don't necessarily translate to new housing units. So you'll notice that the areas of our city that have an older population show subtle decline, and that's because it's anticipated that the number of people there that will either no longer be able to age in place or pass away will not be replaced at a one-to-one value with new people moving, new households moving into that neighborhood. So it's not a direct correlation to population. It's a correlation to the number of households in a, in a geographic area.
Okay. Thank you.
This is where I was. Um, so yeah, this slide is very, very important. You'll note I wrote in red crucial figures. Um, so renter and owner household income from a demographic data point. This is very much scratching the surface. There's a lot more data that I'd like to go over, but I'm trying to, uh, hit the, hit the high points here. So fifty perc- uh, fifty-seven percent of renters in the city earn less than thirty thousand dollars annually as a household. Um, and most of those are multi-person households. So there's obvious income constraints in an area where we're seeing the most upward pressure on pricing, which is single-family rental markets. Um, the share of renter households in the city has increased from forty-three percent in the year two thousand to fifty-one point three percent in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we think it was around COVID where we officially passed that threshold of more than fifty percent rental units in our housing stock. Um, a hundred percent of all the rental growth projected in the next five years is projected in, uh, to occur in households earning more than thirty thousand dollars. Specifically fifty-five point four percent of growth is for people earning, households, I should say, earning fifty to fifty-nine thousand dollars a year. Uh, fifty-four point five percent is from households earning more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, sixty-one point five percent of all homeowner households earn less than sixty thousand dollars. For an owner-occupied housing unit, this is a, a low figure, um, lower than what you'd see on average in the balance of the county and, and the state. Um, all projected growth in, uh, income i- in housing ownership is to occur in income brackets over sixty thousand dollars, and that's six hundred and one households. That's a substantial amount of owner-occupied growth. So I put this table in here, uh, because really, one of the things we've been discussing and that my, my staff and I have kind of been ringing the bell on for some time now, is what we're really worried about from an economic gentrification standpoint. We're not talking about the social impacts of gentrification. Uh, those are worthy conversations. We think those should be led by the community and the commission. From a strict housing market health standpoint, single-family rental stock is where we're at the biggest risk for displacement of residents. And so this projection basically shows that happening. So, um, the dark blue lines are rentals, uh, are renters, and the light blue lines are owners. You'll notice the only place where you're seeing growth of several hundred rental households over the next several years is people earning more than fifty thousand. Uh, and you're seeing a steep decline in renters and rental households that are, you know, our lowest income residents under thirty thousand dollars. And you see a similar, um, price point shift in the house owner-occupied space. The difference in the owner-occupied space is there are equity ramifications for people that own homes in those neighborhoods that may be low-income. So as your housing value goes up and you own your home, you are earning wealth equity in your neighborhood by having a higher-valued asset. The renters do not have that advantage. All they're seeing is that their pricing is going up, and they're not able to keep pace with it from an income standpoint. So I really wanted to put that right out there. The city, I, I think it's important that for us as an organization to acknowledge that this is likely already happening, certainly already happening, um, and is projected to continue and probably get worse if we don't come up with housing policy that protects, uh, people with limited means, uh, and we have some ideas as to how to do that.
Do we happen to have any insights into the, the owner-occupied homes, particularly the lower-income ones that we're seeing, uh, reduction in numbers like-
It's a change in household. So it rec- uh, I would guess that those ones that are under twenty thousand in income that are owner-occupiers are likely elderly people on fixed incomes. Um, so some of those, uh, and as I mentioned, the data indicates that we're gonna have a pretty substantially, uh, aging population over the next several years. So those are people that either could no longer age in place or sadly passed away. Um, the people that are that twenty to thirty thousand and that thirty to forty thousand, those are like Alice families, working, working low-income people, um, that over the next five years are projected to be displaced from their home for one reason or the other. Um, the rentals, you'll notice the much higher cohort, that's because that's not just elderly people. That's people that have very limited means that cannot own a home, uh, for various reasons.
So those in the, that, not the lowest income, but the, you know, a couple notches higher-
Mm-hmm.
-that are, are being dis- being displaced. Is it being displaced, do we have any incentives that displacement that's motivating it? Or is it because, as you mentioned, they're seeing higher equity values and they're cashing out?
It could be all of those things. So it's, yeah-
Or they are, is there economic mobility that they're moving into the, another ring higher? Do we have any insights into-
The data assumes all of that based on concurrent previous performance. And so over the last several years, we've seen, as I showed, uh, substantial, uh, area median income increases, better employment, better workforce participation when you take out the COVID year, year and a half. Um, so some of that certainly is upward mobility. Uh, the majority of that is an upward pressure on rental units. Uh, and that, I say that with quite a bit of certainty, having done our own internal research with property management firms and landlords in the city. Uh, it's just, if you look at what people are making from wage inflation against what rents are going up, that, you can just tell that gap is getting bigger in affordability. Um, and I talk about housing burdened households, um, in some detail as well, and that number pretty much ties a bow around this, this point, where it's, it's mostly displacement by price. And I think if you look at more expansive census data, um, from other communities, you can actually see that there's larger cohorts of people that I suspect maybe lived in our neighborhoods have moved into our neighbors like Muskegon Heights or some of the more rural townships where housing prices are still low. Um, and that's because I think they're getting displaced from our core neighborhoods that are maybe becoming more desirable to a broader base of people.
Thank you. I'll be interested in, uh, digging into that more deeply and discussing that further.
Indeed. Yeah, the sec- that section's pretty telling, yeah, from a-
Thank you.
-data standpoint. Um, this is, in my opinion, the most important table in here from a, from a housing market need standpoint. This is our gap analysis. Um, so you, you've heard me bandy about this number. We need just under three thousand units over the next five years. That number blew my mind. Um, we were anticipating something around two hundred units of absorbability a year at every price point of every housing type, and it's more like six hundred. Uh, and that's shocking. Our last study indicated a hundred and forty units a year of absorbability. So you'll note it runs the gamut on the rental side. The rentals make up over fifty percent of what's needed over the next five years. Um, our largest cohort is eight ninety-five to fourteen thirty a month in rent. Um, and that, but the second largest cohort is extremely low-income rental housing, uh, which is five thirty-six or less per month in rent. And so that pro- that poses a unique challenge. You remember a previous slide, I said we have some specific demographic-driven challenges that other communities may not face. That's a very large number of extremely low rent rentals, and, uh, we're still trying to put some ideas together as to how you even infill that. So, um, and, but you'll notice over the next five years from on the rental side and the for-sale product side, it's pretty much every price point, um, uh, and hundreds of units at each price point. So every project that comes forward, assuming we keep track of how many we plan to infill over the next five years, we can probably put a number on it that makes sense. If somebody comes and says, I want to build fifty houses and I want them to be two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars or more, there's certainly absorbability for that, and there's a market need for that. If somebody finds a way to build for-sale entry-level homes at less than seventy-two thousand dollars and says, I want to build those, then we would certainly accommodate that from a data standpoint as well, because they'll fill. So that one is on, uh, section two of the executive summary, page sixteen. I encourage you to look into that in more detail. So this is an important figure as well. It's not a large number in the grand scheme of things, but it is, uh, something that we need to be aware of.
Going back to the last slide, um, just for a second, looking at the, our housing infill program that we have going on, and most of those are in that moderate income, moderate income window for sale, which is the largest. So, so you're, we're, we're seeing a good correlation there, or would you-
Um, so actually, our for-sale, um, our for-sale figures are mostly landing in that low-income for-sale homes, somewhere around a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, the ones that are being built by Mr. Briggs, we've gotten anywhere between two hundred and two twenty for those, but I think that's mostly the desirability of the lots they're on, uh, in the Jackson Hill neighborhood. They're just very, it's in a nice quiet area overlooking the, the river flats there. Um, but yeah, to, to your point, that's where we've tried to focus, is like attainable housing for like a working family. Like, um, and, you know, I, quite honestly, we have some, gotten to some of that by math problems. So our brownfield can sustain those types of losses against construction. Um, one of the things that, you know, we've kind of internally been scratching our heads on is, okay, how do we achieve for-sale product at less than seventy-two thousand dollars? Um, and we're, we're gonna have to get creative on that. We think we have some ideas, but it's gonna have to take some pretty substantial policy changes. But yes, to your point, we're, we're right in that low and mod income, uh, for-sale product.
Kind of begs the question in my mind then, that the homes that we are selling, you know, that one seventy, one eighty, are costing two thirty-ish to, to construct. Um, are they appropriately priced then? Like, if, if we see the highest demand forthcoming isn't that moderate income, uh, why not price them higher? Or do we just, we don't think that we can get those higher prices for those units? They're not, uh, in alignment?
Yeah, that's a great question. We know that we can't, and it's, uh, we know that because we did price them at construction at the beginning. Uh, two things. One, uh, we learned a lot, uh, as we moved into a new neighborhood building for sale. So we had built all our for-sale product for the most part in Nelson, uh, and pretty close to either midtown or downtown. And as we moved more into traditional residential neighborhoods like McLaughlin, we found that, um, amenities were let, like, so higher-end siding, higher-end counter finishes, higher-end fixtures were not as important to people as getting the price down. And so I'd say those first cohort of ARP, ARP houses we did with the benefit of hindsight are a little what I would call overbuilt for the neighborhood they're in, um, where they're two thirty-five. And some of that, you know, they could, they should have been two hundred, but some of that was supply chain issues and material costs being crazy during COVID. Um, and then we're getting, we're achieving about one eighty-ish for those on an average, is my guess. Um, and so we have redesigned our next phase of ARP homes with m- more floor plans in general, but also floor plans that are coming in between one seventy-five and one ninety to build. Um, so we right-priced our, our build-out. We value engineered them.
That's just about to ask.
Indeed. Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's something that we, uh, definitely learned. And the, the brownfield fortunately is on pace to take care of those losses because we've had other things sell ad-asking, and those, those units are still in the brownfield, and therefore will subsidize those ones we took the bigger losses on. That was a different PowerPoint, though. All right. So substandard housing stock, this is important. Um, in the city limits, there exist four hundred and twenty-four total substandard units. Uh, that includes two hundred and twenty-four overcrowded units. The, uh, federal government, uh, HUD defines overcrowded as more than one point zero one person per room of a house. And so it doesn't mean bedroom, it means room. So it counts bathrooms, living rooms, kitchens. Um, so that means if you have more than one person per total rooms in the house, then you are federally considered an overcrowded household. And if you are a family living in an overcrowded household by the federal definition, you are in this substandard unit, uh, data set. And then two hundred units across the city that lack either complete plumbing and/or kitchen amenities. So, um, that's, I found that pretty shocking, uh, when I read it. And so that's something that we think we can focus on improving over the next five years through, um, refining our rental inspection processes and things like that. Um, eighty-three point four of all hu- percent of all housing stock in the city is pre-nineteen seventy product, so more than fifty years old, um, as compared with only four, just under forty-five percent of the balance of the county. So our, our housing stock is some of the oldest housing stock. That translates to price, which is good for our folks, but it also translates to maintenance costs, which is bad for our folks. So, uh, Camp Bellfield and NIMs submarket account for over one-third of all the substandard units in the city limits. We believe this is likely due to, uh, overcrowding. Uh, Camp Bellfield has some of the smallest floor plans and some of the most attainable homes in the city from a price standpoint. Um, a lot of that housing stock was built by, uh, foundry workforce endeavors in the fifties and sixties, and they're quite small. They were not necessarily intended for a family of four or five. And then that table, uh, illustrates by unit number and, uh, and, uh, gives you overcrowded and incomplete plumbing or kitchen by age and condition. This is an important slide. Uh, so over four thousand six hundred of our nearly fifteen thousand housing units in the city are what we consider cost-burdened. So their housing, all their housing costs combined account for, uh, more than thirty percent of their total income as a household. That includes forty-eight point one percent of all renters, so half of them, more or less, and, uh, one in five owner-occupied households, or approximately fourteen hundred, uh, owner-occupied units in the city. Uh, Nelson submarket has the greatest share of both renter and owner-cost-burden units. I wanted to make sure I shared that specifically because that again probably speaks to some of those gentrification conversations we've been having. So, um, if you look at the area median income for the Nelson neighborhood, we have not infilled enough new housing and, and higher-income folks into that neighborhood to substantially change the AMI writ large, but we have probably created enough market desirability with downtown development and other, other amenities going into the neighborhood to drive the market up on the rents. And so that is causing housing burden issues. Also, some of the most expensive housing in the city is in the Nelson neighborhood, either on the waterfront or downtown. And so folks that are buying that might be reaching a bit, and they are also probably considered housing burden despite the fact that they're higher income than your average resident. So wanted to point that out because we've had, as we have these larger housing conversations around gentrification and economic equity. All right. So we're gonna start getting into apartment stuff. Um, in the city limits, we have twenty-two complexes in the city. Uh, they account for two thousand seven hundred units or nineteen percent of all housing stock. For simple math, one in five houses in the city is an apartment. So that's a pretty, pretty consistent number with, uh, small urban, pretty much what we would expect. Um, they have a ninety-eight point nine percent occupancy rate on average. Um, multiple sites, uh, multiple of those complexes have hundred-plus unit wait lists. So if you're trying to look right now, uh, you will not get an apartment easily. It's di- very difficult. Um, and then the state of Michigan and the county are both in the same boat here. There's just a drastic, drastic shortage of multifamily units. We probably, from a policy standpoint, need to be taking a real hard look at every single apartment developer that, that comes our way and trying to infill some units at mostly every price point. Um, all current tax credits, so Lytech and government subsidies, so public choice vouchers, uh, public housing vouchers, uh, units are full. Uh, well, they were at the time of the survey, they likely still are. Um, so they had a hundred percent occupancy rate. Um, market rate units are ju- almost as full. Uh, overall, there's a shortage across all price points and price types. So that table breaks down, um, the different types of supply by product type, and their number of units, and their vacancies during the study period, and then their overall vacancy rate. And then you can balance that against the rest of the county. It's pretty consistent. Also note how many subsidized units we have in the city limits relative to the remainder of the county. So that's a, a pretty stark figure. We are much more friendly to affordable housing as a community than, than most other folks in the Muskegon County area. This is one that, uh, we asked to have studied specifically as one of our sub, sub-study areas in the, in the bigger document, uh, because it's been something that has been pretty heavily discussed, mostly on the west end of the city. Um, so seasonal and short-term rentals. So seasonal or recreational housing units, recreational housing units are what we would consider our short-term rental seasonals, our people's non-primary residents that they live here in the summer in, and then they go somewhere else in the winter in. Um, from ten eight, twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, they increased to two hundred and forty-one units. Uh, that's a hundred and thirty-eight percent increase, and a hundred of those unit increases alone were in Beechwood Bluffton. So when those folks are saying they are being impacted by it, they are not exaggerating. Um, fifty-one point two percent of all the units are located in Beechwood Bluffton citywide. Twenty percent are in Camp Bellfield and NIMs. We think probably mostly NIMs, but we don't have that broken out. Um, and then nine point one percent are in Glen Side and Lakeside. That actually shocked us. We thought there, those numbers would be reversed. But then we started talking to some folks in those neighborhoods, and we even had staff members that live in NIMs like, yeah, I have five- five on my street, like between Laketon and Southern. And so that, I think they're a lot more prevalent. And then anecdotally, we started having conversations and people, almost everybody that is a city resident knew someone personally who sold or bought a house in NIMs that was used for a short-term rental. So it's more prevalent in that neighborhood than we expected. Um, their share of the total housing stock in the city increased from one point one percent in twenty-ten to two point six percent in twenty-twenty. Um, that's pretty substantial. Uh, the caveat there, it it's considered in housing research communities or demographer communities to become like a problem or a severe uh overrepresentation when you hit five percent in the market. That's an industry standard. Obviously, it's gonna be different based on what your community goals are. Uh, but that was shared with us by the study firm. Like there, there are some communities that are over five percent of their total housing stock, like more than one in twenty units is a short-term rental uh or a seasonal home. Um, and then again, twenty-six point two percent of all housing units in Beechwood Bluffton are classified as either seasonal or recreational units as of twenty-twenty. So one in four houses is vacant part of the time.
Commissioners, thank you. I had a question.
Can you speak to how they established how many of the homes, how many of the units were seasonal or recreational?
Yeah.
Like where did that data come from?
Yeah. So this is why I'm grateful for this firm because it's aggregated from a lot of different places. So um, they did uh an actual phone and foot survey and then they also uh bought data across multiple reservation platforms. And then they checked uh residence exemption uh percentages by uh house by house from the equalization office at Muskegon County.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I actually looked and that is uh enumerated in the study. I looked into that myself. So I'm like, how did you figure that out so fast? But yeah.
Another question. How does this line up to what we know to be true from our data?
It's quite accurate. So I actually just had Wendy in our office pull the registrations for short-term rentals and they make up um approximately two hundred and thirty-some-odd units. And uh of, and then the total between um vacation and recreational and seasonal and then other non-standard units, they call it, uh, is like four hundred, but the most, most of them are short-term rentals. Uh, and it was pretty correlative to how many registered we have. We have slightly no lower number than what was advertised in the market, which we know and we're working on. Um, and then we even had it in SafeBuild, we had it down to like the number of actual structures and how many two units there are and three units there are. And it correlates quite closely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. So this is our for-sale housing overview. There is a ton of data in here for for-sale. We managed to access through a couple of realty partners our MLS data over the last several years and they helped us uh get ahold of some internal datasets from the Association of Realtors, which we appreciate. Um, so yeah, two thousand one hundred and five units were sold between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the median sale price in eighty thou- uh, in twenty-nineteen was eighty thousand dollars. This is very important. In twenty-twenty-two, it had increased seventy-five percent to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, you may recall, a lot of buzz went around town last year when we were part of a Forbes article that projected the eleven most like over-inflated housing markets. Um, and I was pretty quick to criticize that article because it was pretty obvious what they did. They just looked at that number, which play, who has grown most by percentage? And we were one of the top eleven places around the country that they looked at that had grown in percentage of housing cost. What they didn't factor in is how uh deflated our housing costs were before that. And so it was not a very accurate article, but that's the number they were looking at. Um, similar dollar increases across the balance of the county, and this is why you know this is the number they were looking at. So the housing price actually went up more for the balance of the county, but because their houses were already probably closer to appropriately valued, it was a much smaller percentage increase, forty-three percent. Um, we averaged about one point two percent of our stock for sale at any given time. That's considered a very tight or problem housing market. Um, you want two to three percent of your housing stock at any given time, that's considered healthy. Uh, over half of the units for sale were priced under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is good for our folks, the cohort that we pro- that we serve in the city. Um, but most of those that were for sale uh at, under that price point were built prior to nineteen-fifty, which is bad for our folks from a maintenance standpoint and obviously led concerns, things like that. Um, over the study period, only five units were available for sale citywide between two hundred and two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, which is uh across West Michigan and nationwide, considered like your primary family price target. Um, uh, four of those were city builds and one was a private sale, an existing sale. Um, most new construction right now in our private sector side uh is for-sale product over six hundred thousand dollars. So those are primarily lakefront units that are being developed right now. But new construction outside of what we're doing um is very slim and it is mostly too expensive for the folks that we have living here right now. And then obviously, we just have the sales history by year, so you can kind of check that data. Any questions on that?
Commissioners?
All right. And so just gave you some more infographics related to um our median price against the counties. You can see, we started a little late in our housing recovery. So nineteen to twenty, we were a little flat. Um, the county, if you go back even further, had been enjoying pretty good appreciation and values over years. Um, prior to us, we were sitting pretty flat until COVID hit and then people decided that they wanted to move around. And uh, you know, there's a lot of other correlations to things that were happening in the community from a positive standpoint, positive image uh perceptions, things like that. Um, and as so as you can see, the median price county uh for the balance of the county minus us is around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for us. So we are still uh one of the, if not the, most overall affordable owner-occupied community in the, in the area, with the exception perhaps of Muskegon Heights. And then shares of sales history by price is also broken down for both us and the county. And you can see uh under a hundred thousand dollars we accounted for uh forty-five point five percent of all of our home sales were homes under a hundred thousand dollars. So pretty much half of them. All right. Next is, this is something I wanted to touch on. It's, it's important from a housing data point. So we have a real opportunity uh to infill residents and tax base uh in, you know, to the point where the researcher specifically asked us to point it out because it's unusual um by both number and percentage. So twenty thousand one hundred and ninety-six workers commute into the city every day that do not live here uh at the end of the day. That comprises eighty-six point seven percent of the total people employed in the city limits. So most of the people that work here do not live here. Um, he said that's one of the highest numbers he's ever seen. And so both by a proportion of how many people were importing into the city to work as to relative to the number we're exporting every day, which is about a two-to-one ratio, and then just the sheer percentage of of our workforce that does not live in our limits. So I think we probably all can guess why that's been the case. Suburbanization over years, we've seen housing decline in our city. There's been lack of product for family-age uh folks for the most part. Um, so we have an opportunity to reverse that trend as we focus on housing infill. Um, forty-eight percent of those commuters earn more than forty thousand dollars annually, which traditionally means they're probably mortgageable. Um, and then fifty-three point eight percent of those commuters are ages thirty to fifty-four, which is what is considered prime homeownership years. Uh, when surveyed, approximately nine percent of the commuters in our survey said they would live in the city if there was suitable available housing. So about one in ten of those people. And that comprises, you know, a couple thousand people, which is a pretty substantial percentage of our total population. So there's a real opportunity here. Um, and to the point where um Boeing National Research specifically said you should point this out when you talk to your, your elected officials. So something to think about.
So we can see uh why, as you may recall, over past uh fiscal year budgets, why and how we generate more income off of our non-residents paying that half percent on the income versus our residents who are paying the one percent because there are just so many um non-residents working in the city of Muskegon.
Indeed. Yeah. Um, so yeah, and then again, uh, this is barriers to building out. So I wanted to point out, you know, the, everything I've shown you is, there's a lot of challenging stuff, right? But despite the fact that we've had this like record rise in interest rates and we've had volatility in material costs and supply chain, our building and development side of economic development has remained pretty strong. We haven't really slowed down too much. Um, which tells me that I think the largest challenge we're gonna face is lack of available space. And so we just don't have room to build out three thousand housing units, um, which means we need to figure out how to build up or to build in three thousand housing units if we were to hit that number and if that's what the community says it wants. Um, large areas of the city are currently zoned in ways that prevent density and multiple housing choices. So there's lots of neighborhoods. We actually tried, um, I believe it was in Lakeside to convert, uh, there was an owner that wanted to convert a closed-down church, a vacant church building into, I think, a six-plex apartments. And the neighborhood was very strongly against it. It wasn't appropriately zoned and we did not allow it. And so um, I think we need to take a hard look at those from a policy standpoint and say, you know, neighbors may want or not want certain things, but at the same time, we're act, we're actively displacing people with lack of housing stock. And so we have to balance those two priorities. And so that's something to take a look at. Um, but that certainly limits our infill potential and then it also puts a lot of upward pressure on pricing. The less there is of a commodity, the more expensive it is. So uh, researchers identified eighteen potential housing infill sites. Some of these are more likely than others. Um, then there's a couple that are huge opportunities that we're just having a hard time because they're privately owned. We haven't, may only get them moving. Um, the biggest one that I would point out to you is seventeen hundred Oak Avenue. That's twenty-six acres. That's the former general hospital site. It's the existing tower and then many acres of buildable property um adjacent to a good percentage of our existing multifamily housing stock through Carriage House, Hickory Knoll, Glen Oaks, Muskegon Town Homes, et cetera. So, um, but yeah, you can look that list over at your leisure. We, and then obviously, this does not include our existing infill city-owned and land bank-owned lots, which were, that's the area where we're being most successful. And if we were to build on all of them with our current zoning, we would impact less than ten percent of the need. So to put it in perspective.
Oh, huh.
So last but not least, I wanted to do some broad strokes on the community input results. The community input section in the appendices is very, very long and uh and very in-depth. So there's three separate sections. There's stakeholders, as I mentioned, which are agencies, there's major employers, and then there's residents and commuters. And so um, look those over at your leisure. Survey information's very extensive, but it consistently indicates across all three surveys, the sentiment that there's a lack of units for sale for rent and that rents are too high. Those are the biggest things that came out of those, those feedbacks. Um, the largest consistent need identified by stakeholders and employers uh was also rental housing under a thousand dollars. Um, units with two or more bedrooms in single-family settings. So they're, again, reflecting people having a hard time finding family housing. And then housing for people ages twenty-five to forty, which are the employer's main working cohort, and they are commuting a really long way or not keeping their employees. And then rentals that accept tenant-based vouchers. I thought that was pretty telling considering the ten ninety-five Third Street uh situation that we just had. And some of that was, we pointed that director in the, or that uh, that developer in that direction based on some of the feedback we saw in this study. So we might not have thought of it had it not been for this document. Uh, housing types that were perceived as high need included apartments, duplex, triplex, townhomes, ranch-style and single-family housing, low-cost fixer-uppers, uh, modern move-in-ready homes. Uh, and then housing types that were perceived as minimal need by these surveyed folks were condominiums, single-room occupancy units or SROs, and accessory dwelling units or ADUs. So um, I think some of that probably came from a lack of understanding exactly what those mean. Uh, SROs can be uh pretty creatively done. And then accessory dwelling units was briefly explained in the survey, uh, but if you had no experience with it, you might not think it's as important as, you know, a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And maybe it's not. Uh, commuters considering relocating the area overwhelmingly preferred, modern move-in-ready homes and ranch-style, single-family homes, which we have a very large shortage of. So um, and then I just gave an example of uh one of the opinion questions and how we break that down. So that's the data we just logged through. That was a very, probably three or four percent of the major stuff in there. But uh, any questions on that before we move into suggested next steps?
Commissioners?
Uh, yeah. Uh, you, you mentioned in the last slide, uh, it was something about low-cost fixer-uppers.
Yeah.
And um, if I remember correctly, there was a program here through the city, wasn't it, where the city offered uh those type of homes to anyone in the uh community that wanted to get those and fix them up, but provide some type of assistance to help them. Do we still have that program?
Well, so we have several programs. Uh, we don't specifically currently have one on the books that we're, that we're actively using where we're selling homes that would not meet code. What we usually do is we try to pick some up on the, like, that are coming back on tax auction uh or other means and we buy them and we rehab them and we sell them at very affordable rates. So just recently sold a home on Catawba for like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so we'll do that, we'll take on that cost burden because those folks that are in that cohort that want, you know, those fixer-uppers, I don't think they're the folks that are already here that are trying to buy a home. I think those are folks that want to get a good deal and put sweat equity into it. But in our neighborhoods, a lot of those folks are, if they were to buy that home at, say, um, eighty thousand dollars, that needs fifty thousand dollars worth of work, they're probably not able to get financed or access to capital to do that fifty thousand dollars worth of work. So the program we have is specifically uh infill or like existing home rehab. And then we also have down payment assistance, priority repair for existing homeowners, things of that nature, which I think you're pretty familiar with, siding, roofing and stuff like that.
Right, right, right.
Yep. So mo- most recently, we've been focused on making those homes code-compliant and quality dignity-based housing prior to selling them to folks that are eighty percent or below AMI. Um, and then we just, since the hardest-hit programs from twenty-fifteen to twenty-eighteen, we just have a far fewer vacant bloated homes. There's a lot of vacant lots and not so many structures. So that's the other portion is we just don't have as many of those houses around.
Well, um, okay, just a uh maybe a pilot or a experimental um program where citizens that's living here in the community, not outsiders that's coming in to look and, like you said, put the sweat equity in. But maybe um some type of experimental um program where we can assist uh residents that have lived here, say, five, ten years or whatever, they wanted to purchase something like that and put um, you know, income into it and fix it up and then stay there. I think that would help drive the um, you know, homeless down, you know, where they can have homes or a stable place to stay. I mean, what type of uh, I guess, uh, thoughts or would you have on something like that, Director Echo?
On that specific idea?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Um, I think we're at a point where, and I'm gonna talk through in next steps, where what we'd really like to do is make sure that all seven of you are experts in this document. And then we want to take that next step, make sure we have organizational buy-in and then start to really engage with our neighborhood stakeholders and start to get those types of ideas. Like, hey, if we were to do that, if we were to take some houses on the auction that needed a lot of work and then, you know, we're, put together some program with maybe our CDBG or other dollars that said, okay, we're gonna give you a, a build-out allotment here and, you know, sell you at cost, then that's, I'm completely making that up as a hypothetical. Then what would your response be to that? Who would participate in that? And, you know, put, start to put together actual programming based on those types of ideas. But we really want to do a lot of community engagement first.
Yeah.
To figure out what people could actually achieve. So from a data-driven perspective.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot. Just keep me posted. Let me know.
Well, we're gonna hope to meet with each of you one-on-one, so, you know, we can speak in depth.
Commissioner Ramsey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jake, great study. Before we get into the next steps of it, what is the cycle for this study? Um, what was our cost effectively? And then when do we find in that cycle? When, when does that cycle start? I would assume we're gonna continue to redo this um as it's so informative and helpful so that we can keep on making policy updates?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question. So as long as I'm in the role I'm in, I'm gonna recommend that we continue to have five-year updates, complete stu- complete studies. So we would contract our next one towards the end of twenty-twenty-seven. It would come out in the beginning of twenty-twenty-eight. Um, and then obviously, if there's needs for single-market analysis by neighborhood, th- these types of firms can do that, too. So, uh, but I, you know, and I'm gonna get into that a little about, about identifying like our key performance indicators and figure out, now that we know what the challenges are and what the data says, we are gonna be a lot more effective in formulating policies and strategy ideas for you guys to agree with or disagree with. Um, but yeah, and then to, as to the cost, it was just over forty-three thousand dollars.
So then it's not cost prohibitive and we will, it will be included in our, in our yearly budget within that five-year cycle?
Oh, indeed. I, I would say so. That would be, I'll at least be asking for it. Um, but I can tell you that if I were to bring somebody on with this capacity and, first of all, it would have to be their full-time job. And then there would be portions of the year where they'd have nothing to do and it would cost us a lot more. So.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or feedback you wanna share at this time?
All right. So next steps, we kind of slogged through the biggest key points I want you guys to take away from, from this study as you read it. Um, so really, what, our first step is understanding. So we'd like to schedule one-on-ones with the manager and commissioners um after you've had a chance to review the document and then really say, okay, here's everything we touched on in the presentation. What, what struck out you, you know, what really stuck out to you? Um, and how can we incorporate some of the engagement that we do with the community to solve some of those problems? Uh, and then obviously, key staff engagement. That's already happened. Uh, my department heads already, already have copies of this. The management staff have copies of this. Um, but I'd like to start putting together like a staff committee where uh I'm gonna coincide it with my department head leadership meetings where we're gonna go over a different section every couple weeks. And so we're gonna invite other folks to that, too. Um, and then once we really, as, I think that's the challenge with these big planning documents, is like you, you pay a lot of money for them and they're really cool. And then you read them once and then they sit on the shelf. And then five years later, it's like, oh, man, we haven't done anything with that. Um, I don't wanna do that with this. I think we're in like a historic problem uh in our housing market. We need twenty percent increase to the housing stock. Um, so I'd really like to find ways to engrain this into the organizational culture. And so working with the manager to do that. Um, from there would be our engagement. Um, so in presenting on and getting feedback from our submarkets, so the neighborhood associations, hosting community-driven events that are, are city-sponsored events in those neighborhoods. Um, you know, not getting, I mean, making sure that these are like accessible things that we discuss, like here's, here's the reality on the ground in this neighborhood. Uh, can you empathize with that? Do you have a different experience? Um, and then synthesizing that feedback and kind of adding it to our notes on the document. From there, that's when to, to Vice Mayor German's point, we start to identify five-year goals for our housing policy and programs, like what do we need to change? What's working well? Like what do we need to change? What's working well? And then develop and propose policy measures in the strategy side and specific projects for your guys' consideration. And then we launch that and we deploy those strategic projects and implement those policies to affect positive housing outcomes is the way we put it. So less overcrowding, more housing units available, more affordable units, better income outcomes for people to move up the housing change without having to leave the city. A lot of people do, to the mayor's point, have upward mobility. And then there's no housing stock for them in the city that they desire to reflect that upward mobility. And so that's also a challenge. So that's the next steps as we see them. There's a relative.
Just a moment, Director Echo. Commissioners, St. Clair, question?
Couple of questions. Is this study going to be made available to the community?
That's a great question. So we're launching it both on our website and on the Housing Next Regional website on Friday. And over the course of time, I've discussed it with the community engagement manager. And she's been very, very helpful in effectively coming up with what we would call like a housing dashboard page where we can show like, here's the projects that have been done. Maybe we'll go back as far as like 2017. And then like when Lakeview lost Phase One was done. And here's the number of market rate units. Here's their rental, like their rent range. Here's a number of Lytec units. Here's what we have in the pipeline. And that way people can kind, we can kind of track that key performance indication. So that's, that's the long-term goal. That will not happen Friday, but this document would be available in PDF on Friday.
And is there a plan for, I know we talked about this. Is there a plan for community engagement around, how do you navigate this document? What does it mean? Is there an opportunity for people to come and ask questions that couldn't be here today?
Sure, absolutely. So first and foremost, as I mentioned, but I want to reiterate, during these engagement sessions, I think it's important to understand that this document is really written for people that do this stuff every day, like myself and my staff. And that's okay. That's what it's for. So what we'll likely do is have that parent document available and then put together presentation-based materials, infographics, things like that that are much more digestible for, you know, maybe the folks that are, live in Jackson Hill and work at ADAC or GE Aviation, where I could never go to their work and do their job. So I'd really like it if they explained it to me. So I think that's kind of the goal and the approach. So speaking to timeline, March through June of this year, as I said, define and achieve organizational buy-in, widely publicize the study as much as we can. Then throughout the summer and into the early fall, we want to take our time presenting the submarket, individual submarkets, the specific data and potential solutions as we see it and then get their feedback on what they think they need in that community from a lived perspective, a lived experience. And then fall of 2023, we're going to use all that feedback and study data to develop suites of potential policies. So these would be policies related to more guidance and specificity for developers as it relates to what kind of housing we're looking for. And then trying to make sure we're balancing that with what is profitable for them. So that's the challenge. Like I often have citizens tell me like, we don't need X, Y, and Z. We need A, B, and C. And the challenging answer that I usually have is, okay, but these folks are in business to make money and A, B, and C doesn't make them money in our market. And so that's why you're seeing like something like a district Detroit being built in Detroit because the rents there might approach $3,500 a month and we just don't do that. And, but the cost to build it is the same as it is there. So China, having those conversations to make sure we're getting buy-in and feedback from the community. And then fall and winter of this year, we're identifying and posting requests for proposals for targeted projects, soliciting partnerships in the private sector for non-public land projects. So I'm specifically talking about places like the general hospital site. There's some other private flat parcels that we don't own, that we think would be good candidates, that we'd like to either get ownership of or come up with strategic partnerships for. And then obviously throughout the balance of this study period, we want to implement those policies and projects and measure our key performance indicators and assess it with a new housing needs assessment towards the end of that study period. See how we did. So that's my time. I really appreciate everybody coming in on a Wednesday and taking the time. I tried to make it as expedient as I could. Happy to take any questions or get any feedback.
Commissioners, any final questions? Well, not final, final, but for the time being, questions or comments? Commissioner Hood?
Yeah, I think you mentioned it already, Jake, but, well, Director Echo, sorry about that.
I've been called worse.
Well, that's the one name that I can remember. But you're going to go over this with each one of us so we can get a good understanding of it.
Yep. Yep. So my, my ask is that you at minimum read the executive summary, which is much more narrative-driven and much less table and chart-driven and stuff. And then from there, we, I will have Wendy in our office reach out to schedule one-on-ones and we'll, can have it over coffee. We can have it in my office. But I want to make sure, like I said, I want to make seven experts on this document. Or at least like you could, you could go and do one of these public engagement meetings just as easily as my staff or I could do it.
That might be a stretch.
Glad we got you, fool.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions or comments at this time?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot to digest and process. We just got the study this week. We've not had as much time to figure it as yourself, but we appreciate the highlights. And then we will independently dig into this 400-plus-page document and have our one-on-ones with you. And very much look forward to all the next steps that you've outlined. And it's going to be a all-hands-on-deck process going forward in terms internally and our external stakeholders and partners to actualize and act on.
For sure. Yeah, and I think it's going to be very synergistic with some other community-oriented goals. So, you know, in Jackson Hill, one of the consistent feedbacks we get is what are you going to do with forever school? What's going on with it? Why is it sitting empty? And we get really mixed feedback. So, you know, for as many people as I tell, have tell me or my office, like there's, you know, people trespassing and I don't feel safe with it like that. I have just as many people tell me like, if you try to tear that school down, I'll chain myself to it and you're not going to do that. For every person that I say like, that says like, we need housing that the neighborhood folks can afford, I have people say like, we only want single-family detached housing and we don't want, you know, income-restricted housing. So really I think if we can sit down and have a candid conversation about what data exists on the ground, I think it's going to help those communities and those neighborhoods that have those projects in them that are sitting idle kind of help us determine what they want to see. And so I think we're going to try to couple some of these engagements with project-specific opportunities as well. So we'll keep everybody informed of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, having said that, I'm going to co-sign that and highlight something that you said earlier. And that's really the basic understanding of the language being used, right? So how do we standardize the language that we have across all of our neighborhoods so that everybody understands what they're getting, what these words mean and how it applies to structures like older schools or new builds and things like that? Because I think the people are afraid of things that they don't quite understand and I don't blame them. I am too. My name is Michael Ramsey. I'm people. So I think that any time that we can get to standardize that language so that we as a bench can also support it and what it means to, to kind of mitigate that confusion that is really based out of fear that a lot of our neighbors are experiencing, I think that we should all show up to help and congratulate you for recognizing very early on.
Thank you.
Excellent. Last chance from the dais. All right. Thank you, Director Echo.
Thank you.
And now we have a public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to give public comment? If you got the form filled out, if you can hand that. Yeah, if you can bring the forms, well, you can bring them directed to me. We'll cut out the middle person here. Thank you. And, all right, Julius, is it lead?
Lead better.
Better?
Lead better. If you get ready for this meeting, you're going to know me very well.
Welcome. You have up to three minutes to provide your remarks, sir.
How many minutes I got?
You have three minutes. It's on the screen right above you.
Oh, cool. Let's get started then.
So yeah, you started.
Have you ever noticed that when people bring data and surveys and stuff, it's always one-sided? Because as I live in the city, I did census a few years ago. Did census and noticed that everybody not come to their door. Now you talk about the suburb, you talk about trouble and all that stuff. But the people who don't, who don't want restricted income live on suburb. These people got their houses built when they built up suburb. Of course, they don't want restricted housing, but you forget about the people who've lived there. They didn't come to this survey. Nobody likes SafeBill. Nobody in any area that is low-income like SafeBill. So if SafeBill come to your door, how many people are likely to come and answer it? So the data's flawed. You don't have enough low-income houses. You tell me that you don't want bill low-income houses because they're not, if people can't make money, they're making money here. You don't put it, you have to put a demand on the developers here to make low-income housing for the $40,000 or the $30,000 that is in that neighborhood. And let's not forget about single people who work, who are displaced because you keep talking about gentrification, but you don't give, you're not talking about the people who live here. Education is one of the following reasons why people live in the city. Education sucks. You know it. If you don't, you know it now. It sucks. That's why people are moving their kids out. You want people to move here, but you don't want to fix the streets. You don't want to give people who live here 1%. Detroit gave people in the, who wanted to do work on houses, they gave the houses for a dollar. Mom did real estate all in Detroit. Know about that. Detroit had programs that you could get furnaces, plumbing and all that stuff. The city paid for it because a house that is occupied is not a house that drug dealer can use. You can make small homes. You got 350 unit, make small ones. Take up areas that are not populated and let people live there. People who have something to work, people who work and have something worthy to have of their own, take care of it. You people are phasing out people who live here. That is wrong. And you listen to somebody who don't give a damn about us. He tells you by his mercs and his miles. In five years, won't nobody who live in Muskegon be able to live here? You owe us more than what you are giving us. We put you in office. We got off our ass and voted for you. We wanted a change. We demanded a change. Stop trying to make money off of the people who live here. Give the people who live here something worth or they could give you money. We pay the highest taxes anywhere. But you want to keep taking from us. When Mr. Trump had a perfect ideal, we shouldn't have to wait five years. We should have it now. We know it works. It worked in Detroit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you joining us this evening. Next up, we have Diane Foster joining us from Jackson Hill. Welcome. You have up to three minutes to provide your remarks. You know the routine. Welcome back.
Hi. Diane Foster, 135 Ottawa. I wanted to say that we have buildings that I go by and they don't make me scared. What they make me is sad that they're not being used. I see so many single people, male and female, being displaced because they're doing all these Airbnbs with the homes they were living in. Or their apartments have gone from 650 to 1,000. They're a one-income person, family. Any one-income family is going to struggle. I don't care if there's just one person or if there's, well, God help if there's more than one. Because there isn't enough income to go around on. I can tell you that 20 years ago, my son had done, he's a nuclear physicist and he had done some research on what it costs for each person in your family to actually have a decent life. It was $1,000 per person. That was over 20 years ago. That isn't even nearly what we're, we're not even close to that anymore, not even close. But we still need, now we need probably 500 more dollars to 2,000 per person when it comes to their care, full-on food, medical care, their housing. So when you have a one-income person and the rent's $1,000, they're the only person that is suffering that, that particular cost. There's nobody to split it with, so now they're displaced. I want to know why we can't take some of this property that we have, like next to my property, that's doing nothing but collecting dust and dirt all the time and build like a rooming, room in board homes. You know, for single people that need a decent place to live, but don't want to live in a hotel and they can't afford anything like a townhouse or a home because God knows they don't pay all that well either. So most of this depends on what income we have around here, which isn't high. It's not like we have some real high-paying jobs around here on an average. And we don't have, on an average, low-income housing. So between the two, we're going to constantly have this problem. And people are constantly going to complain and we're going to still be in the same boat year after year. So I don't know why we can't accommodate the, the, single people pay the most taxes and get the least out of them.
Foster.
See you later.
Appreciate you joining us this evening. Anyone else in the audience wishes to give public comment? Nope. Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to give public comment?
We do not.
All right. Then if there's no public comment and no one on the phone, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
We got a motion by Vice Mayor German, supported by Commissioner St. Clair to adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you. Take care. Be well.